Okay, Mr. Seelig, whenever you're ready, we're gonna... I'm gonna keep the time up here, but we'll just ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Russell Seelig. I live at 38 Oxford Street, and I'm here to talk about the continued undervaluation of cell towers in the city and the effect on tax revenues. Two weeks ago, I spoke about the undervaluation of billboards. A little bit of history. I am a Department of Revenue certified assessor, and when I first started this effort, there were a number of cell towers not even on the tax roll, and those that were, were grossly undervalued. Over the course of several years, and with the help of the Finance Control Board, valuations were raised, but they're still short of fair cash value, which is the gold standard. The undervaluation continues. Each of you now has in front of you an example of an undervaluated cell tower. This tower on Bernie Avenue is visible from I-91 in the north end. You all have seen it. You've all driven by it thousands of times. So it serves I-91 traffic and the local neighborhood. It's an investment property. Cell tower income is from the telecoms that rent space on the cell tower for their antenna and includes space for the ground support buildings at the base of the tower. Each of the antennas on the tower is estimated to provide the owner with a payment of $50,000 a year by contract. They have long-term contracts. All expenses go to the telecom companies that rent the space. These are a little hard to count, but there are 11 antenna on that tower. With 11 antenna, the annual income is estimated to be $550,000 a year, just for that one tower. And the $50,000 is based on public records for towers that are on public land. If we deduct 10% for expenses for the tower owner, that yields a net income to the tower owner of $495,000 a year. Capitalizing that income at a conservative 9%, yields a cell tower component fair cash value of $5.5 million compared to the assessor's fair cash value of just over $800,000. And the assessors do that on what's called the cost approach to value, and that difference in fair cash value is equal to just over $180,000 in tax revenue for the city. Capitalizing the income is a route to fair cash value. The question is, what level of investment would yield an income of $495,000 at a 9% interest rate? And the answer to that question is $5.5 million. On this one parcel alone, the loss in property tax revenue is in excess of $180,000 per year. There are about a dozen cell towers in the city, not all with as much income as this example. Not all of them have that many antennas on them, but they're all valued by the assessors in the same value, and therefore, they are well below the fair cash value to the benefit of the owners of the towers. The income approach yields the best fair cash value for an investment property, what an investor would pay for a property based on his net income. What the Springfield assessors do in valuing many investment properties, not just cell towers, is costing the city millions of dollars in tax revenue, and that's all for reasons for which we can only speculate. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Seelig. Our next and last speaker is Mr. Bob McCarroll regarding the Bliss House Historic District. Mr. McCarroll?
Counselors, I'm Bob McCarroll. I live at 96 Elliott Street, and I am the owner of 4446 Dale Street, which is coming to you tonight as the Bliss House Local Historic District Proposal. In the autumn of 2010, I bought this property, and I bought it because it was one of the oldest dated houses left in the city of Springfield, and it had been so altered over the years that it didn't look like itself anymore. It was built on Main Street in 1805 and moved to Dale Street in the 1870s, and then in the early 20th century, it had big porches put on it, and then it had fake brick siding put on it, and then it had vinyl siding put on it. And starting in 2011, spurred by the tornado, because it was right in the path of the tornado, I began a three-year restoration of the outside, which is now complete. So the house now looks much more like it did in 1805 than it did 10 years ago. My concern is I do not want a subsequent owner screwing up what I did to restore it. And therefore, I ask that the Springfield Historical Commission begin the process to create a local historic district for the property. And in Massachusetts, you can have single-building local historic districts, as you know, and they have done the process, and you are now the final step to enacting the Bliss House Local Historic District. And I will urge you that you vote in favor of it, so that down the line, any exterior alterations has to be reviewed by the Springfield Historical Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our public speak-out.
Mr. President, Bob, where is that at now?
Where is it located?
Where is...I know, I came by to your grand opening.
Where is it physically located?
Where is it physically on the agenda?
It's on Dale Street. Dale Street is in the south end. If you go up Union, right where the Dakin Animal Shelter is, the Dakin Animal Shelter is on the corner of Dale Street, and when you go down, it's just one block down.
Okay. Is this on the agenda tonight?
It is.
Okay.
Unless it's been taken off. It was on when I checked it on the Internet.
It is. It is item number 17 on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. Okay, so that concludes our public speak-out portion of the meeting. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. I have heard Counselors from Kateri Walsh, and she's feeling under the weather.
President Justin Hirst?
Present.
President Kenny Shay, absent. E. Henry Twigs?
Present.
President Timothy Allen?
Present.
President Timothy Rook?
Present.
President Barel Williams?
Here.
President Orlando Ramos?
Present.
President Marcus Williams?
Present.
President Adam Gomez?
Here.
President Timothy Thomas Ash?
Here.
President Melvin Edwards?
Present.
President Kateri B. Walsh, absent. Michael Fenton?
Present. Will the Counselors and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Counselors, before we get into reports of committee, I have good news to share. Counselor Hirst and his wife Denise have just welcomed a new member to their family, so congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Very...
Boy or a girl?
Boys.
Thank you.
New baby boy.
Yes.
We're all very pleased for the Hirst family. Are there any reports of committee this evening? Counselor Ash?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to keep the council up to date, we've had our series of meetings, public safety meetings across all the different wards. I think we've been in Wards Five, Wards Two just recently, and Wards Three early on. And so we're just going around, taking kind of a temperature check, how the public feels about the pawn shop and the moratorium. And I can tell you, from those three meetings that we have had, I don't think there's been any one person that's advocated for not extending the moratorium, and so I just wanted to be clear. So if there's a desire for other counselors to have, particularly the ward counselors, for us to continue that, we're certainly more than willing to continue going around. So just let me know, or Susan and Kelly, that you want us to sign up and come out to the ward, and we'll be glad to go.
Thank you. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic Development Subcommittee met last week to discuss the proposed rental registration ordinance. Counselor Gomez, who's a member of that committee, was present, and Counselor Allen was present as well. We had a discussion with several of the different property owners and managers across the city about the ordinance, about the most recent changes to the ordinance, and Commissioner Desilis also joined us towards the end of the meeting. It's something that I've been working on for almost two years now, and it's changed pretty dramatically since my initial proposal, and I want to share the most recent changes to that ordinance with the council before I bring it out for a vote. You know, one of the most significant changes is in the fees that are associated with the rental registration. When it was initially proposed, it was proposed as a per-unit fee, which, after doing some research and talking to landlords, it would have really been unfair to impose a per-unit fee, because it would have affected the bigger landlords more than it would have everyone else. And so what we've done is we changed that to a per-dwelling fee, similar to what they have in the town of Amherst. Amherst has a $100 per year per dwelling fee, and they have a 100% compliance. What I am proposing is a $40 every four-year fee, and so it comes down to $10 per year per dwelling. It's something that's a little bit more fair for all of the landlords. And essentially, what we're doing is not creating new policy. Essentially, what we're doing is we're expanding on something that the city currently has. We're currently inspecting dwellings that have four units and up regularly on a two-year cycle. We want to expand that to three-family and two-family houses, but instead of doing that on a two-year cycle, we'll be inspecting those on a four-year cycle. The Code Enforcement Department is on board. Once we pass this, it will come with additional staff and additional resources for the Code Enforcement Department, so they'll be able to handle the added responsibilities. And I'm hopeful that, you know, my colleagues will support this. It's something that will benefit the city of Springfield, will improve the rental market across the city, and help property values, which will essentially benefit all of the landlords in the city of Springfield. I intend to have one more Subcommittee meeting on the 31st. It's a Thursday, scheduled for 2:00 o'clock right here in City Hall, and hopefully bring it out for a vote on April 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee had six items from our meeting two weeks ago. There were 19 financial items on that meeting, on that agenda. Six of them went into committee, and we met on Thursday, March 10th, in here, and we had about 17 or 18 people at the meeting. The three members of the Finance Committee were there, Counselor Rook, Counselor Twigs, and myself, as well as Counselor Hirst, Counselor Bud Williams, and Counselor Walsh. At that meeting, it was a lively meeting, and at that meeting, we got through four, four of the items of the six that got into committee, were approved at that meeting, two stayed in committee, and we met again before this meeting at 5:30 today. One of those other two items was approved at that meeting. We had further information on eminent domain, et cetera, on which to support our decision. And the sixth item, I believe that we've spoken about, will probably be withdrawn from the agenda tonight. There are three other...so we are prepared to take action on five of the items that went in, well, actually, on all six, when one is gonna be withdrawn, so at the appropriate time tonight. All the items are listed separately on the agenda. There are three new items tonight, and one of them is also for a request for a five-year contract, which is also one of the ones that went into committee before. In this case, no action has been taken. The discussion on a five-year contract, which I believe is the first five-year contract reference...yeah, number six, item number six. That has not...nothing has been done with that. They brought it to the council at first, as we requested. That's about switching banks, so that's one of the items. The other two items are smaller items. So at any time tonight, if you want, whenever, whether we do it out of committee or whether we do it in the regular order on the agenda, however you want to do it, is fine with me, but we're prepared to take action on all six items, plus the three that are on for tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of receiving the report of committee say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, item number one, please.
I have here February review and expenditure.
Good evening, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have the February revenue expenditure report. It represents eight months of the fiscal year. We're currently showing a small surplus of $6 million, which is really a product of the ebbs and flows of expenditures and revenues.
Any questions on the report? Counselor Williams?
Just thanks, Pat. Just in terms of the mayor made a dramatic announcement last week about 59 new police officers. Does this have any impact with that, or do we have to wait the next fiscal year before we start talking about it?
There is money in this budget through vacancies and attrition.
So, okay, so that was my point. So these are all not new 59 hires. There might be 59 hires, but because of attrition and folks leaving sick, disabilities, what have you?
There's a net gain of 15 police officers.
Oh, okay.
Brings the complement from 409 to 424 sworn police officers.
So the 59 was a net gain of just the 15?
Correct. So there's 40 vacancies, four pending retirements, four more vacancies, possibly another fifth one, but there's 44 vacancies and 15 new positions.
Because I couldn't make the press conference. I didn't have any information, so I hate to ask you.
So it gets us ahead of attrition. Two years ago, we did 22 new police officers, and we've had a rash of retirements, so it had left a lot of vacancies, and now we have the ability to do a larger academy.
So the fact that we will be able to afford this, because it's just a net gain of 15?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and then that's gonna be in the police budget? When's that gonna be talked about?
Well, we'll be discussing it at the police budget hearing on Wednesday, of the mayor's budget hearing, but also throughout the process.
We have our...
When you have your hearings.
Tom Ash has his meeting.
Correct. So when you guys have your hearings, we'll just flush it down.
At least you cleared one. There's not 59 new police officers?
Correct.
Which I thought it was.
And so the attrition savings will pay for a portion of it this year, and then we had to build in approximately $700,000 or so for FY '17.
Thanks, TJ.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of receiving the report say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have items number two through four, please?
I have here BPW report, order Archer Street Comcast, and the other one is Bernie Avenue, and zone change report, 1130 Bay Street.
All those in favor of receiving the report say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five.
I have here an order, Mass League of Community Health Center.
Okay, all those in favor of receiving the grant say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number six.
I have here the Treasures Department request for a five-year contract.
Mr. Plant?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request before the City Council to authorize a five-year contract for banking services. Right now, our current banking contract expires 12/31/2016. We want to go over RFP sometime in the next month or so. I learned my lesson from last meeting to make sure we come to the body prior to going out RFP, so there was no RFP in the street, but we're asking for an authorization for the Treasurer to seek a five-year contract. Wendy goes up to bid for banking services.
Who do we use now?
People's Bank out of Holyoke.
Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. We did discuss this at the Finance Committee before this meeting, and Counselor Twigs and I voted to support this. They currently have a three-year contract with People Savings Bank, want to go out for a five-year contract, so there's a longer time when you're with somebody rather than transitioning on a more frequent basis. So Counselor Twigs and I agreed with it, and brought that, bring that recommendation to the council.
Counselor Ramos?
TJ, what are the benefits of going with a five-year contract rather than a three-year?
The five-year, it takes about a year to transition to a new bank, so if we end up going to a different bank, it would be a year transition to that new bank, and then once you're in the new bank, you're gonna end up, you know, starting to think about an RFP again in a couple of years, and then also, you get better pricing from the banks if they know they're gonna get a five-year contract from the city.
Counselor Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, TJ. Just in terms of when you go to the five-year contract and you get into a situation where the city's not really benefiting, it's gone south. Are there clauses within this contract that we can be terminated by either party?
Yeah. Thanks, Counsel. That's actually a good question. In all of our contracts, there's a notice of termination, so if we're not satisfied with services, it's usually a 30- or 60-day notice that we build into the contract, so we just notify them that we're not satisfied. They could take corrective measures if that's part of the contract, or we could just terminate the contract.
And then when we get into these contracts with the banks, in terms of the cash benefits, do we actually make money on our money? Is that one of the things you look at when you go out?
That is definitely part of the evaluation criteria, but I'll defer that one to the Treasurer.
Because different banks give you different incentives.
Correct, and that's part of the evaluation criteria.
I don't know, Steve, if you've got a better...
Part of, Counselor, part of any...you're right, anybody who puts money in a bank, we expect to make some money on it. Currently, the interest rate is atrocious. I'm excited, I just got an investment at .9, so we're pretty excited about that, but we do that, and part of the RFP process will evaluate what we get for interest on the operating accounts.
So .9 is the interest you're getting now?
That's the highest rate we're getting right now.
Yeah. Is that typical with Peoples and TD?
No, no, most of them, we, with Peoples, we have a couple that are .7. Most are in the .5 range right now.
And you're trying to get to that .9, I guess?
Trying to get as high as I can get without breaking any laws. It is.
Okay. So in your estimation, this is not going back, because you probably have a clause, you could extend it with Peoples if you had one.
No, we can't. We had, it was a straight three-year contract.
It's over, okay.
Yeah, so we have to go out to bid, and the five years, for all the reasons that TJ mentioned, another one is that we get a lot of grants that you guys approve that are wired into our bank accounts, and when we switch to a new bank, we have to go to all them and send all the form, get all the paperwork going again to have them transfer it to the right bank. And so it's just, it's a nightmare.
But I would...Counsel Ramos, I think was onto a very good point, because I think as the economy starts to come back, we get into a five-year contract, they're paying .9, end up paying 1.3 somewhere, 1.4.
The thing is, I sit down with the banks pretty rarely, at least once a month with the different banks, and use them, you know, if I'm getting .5, for example, from XYZ Bank, I'll go to the bank paying me .3 and say, "Well, I can transfer money, investment money here," and get .5, and they usually come back and get them.
Oh, so you can, within that, you have the ability to transfer?
The contract is for the operating, paying the bills and stuff, more than investment.
So the investment money you can...
I can move around.
Move around, okay. That was, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Edwards?
Steve?
Sure.
I assume this is a competitive process?
Yes.
Is there any benefits for the money staying with a local bank versus one of the national banks, or is there any incentives to that, or is that just...
Service-wise, all banks are gonna give you the same kind of service. I like, personally, I've, since I've been Treasurer, I've always tried to stay local. Unfortunately, there's no real Springfield banks left. Peoples is about the closest we have right now. However, the good thing with Peoples is when I, if there is an issue, I call a person, get a live body, and it's not referred 10 different ways to choose, like a national bank might do it. But that being said, if the National Bank came in with a much better proposal to us, we definitely would entertain that, too. But I prefer local, and I think you get better service, honestly.
Yeah, well, we felt locally the effects of the foreclosure situation, and when we did the research around foreclosures, we found that our local banks were not the problem. It was all the national banks that had the problems, and you were absolutely right. One of the biggest complaints was they could never get a, they couldn't find the same person they talked to on the phone, ever, and it was always, never could talk to anybody in person. But you're saying there's no particular benefit?
No. I've been, to be honest, I've been very pleased with Peoples. When we talk to Peoples, we talk to a Vice President or higher on a regular basis. If we have any issues at all, it's a direct, I have their cell numbers, I call them directly. I've called a few on vacation. They're not happy, but they're daft.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Counselor Hirst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shay, absent. Counselor Twigs? Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent. Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, order is approved. Item number seven, Madam Clerk.
I have here a transfer of unexpected bond receipts for Putnam Vocational Academy in $1 million.
Counselor Allen?
Yes, Mr. President. At Mr. Plant's request, and at the mayor's request, the mayor has requested that we withdraw this item, item seven. It will be reincorporated in a new item that will be presented to us for the next meeting.
All those in favor of allowing the matter to be withdrawn without prejudice, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Matter's withdrawn. Item number eight. Madam Clerk?
I have here an order approving a contract in excess of, from three years to five years, School Department.
Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. This is the aforementioned five-year contract that went into committee two weeks ago. We met on it on that Thursday, March 10th, and approved it at that point for the five-year contract, so the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve this.
Any other Counselors? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Hirst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shay, absent. Counselor Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent. Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, matter passes. Okay. Item number nine, Madam Clerk.
I have here bond authorization, MSBA project, $9,103,543.
All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Counselor Allen?
At the March 10th meeting that I referred to before, we discussed this and approved it at that meeting. Superintendent Dan Walsh was there, and other members of representing the school committee. TJ was there, et cetera, representing the School Department, TJ and Pat Roach. So our recommendation was to approve this for the school repairs.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Counselor Hirst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shay, absent. Counselor Twigs?
Here.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh, absent.[1696.45] Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, bond is authorized. Item number 10.
I have here bond authorization, food service building, $7 million.
All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it? Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. This item was discussed on March 10th, but we didn't get to the finish line with it. We kept it in committee until today's Finance Committee meeting, and we approved it at today's Finance Committee meeting. The reason we kept it in committee between March 10th and today was because it had the issue of eminent domain and how are we going to procure this building? That was one of the key issues. And Attorney Breck and Attorney Moore were at the meeting today. So we discussed it in committee. Counsel Twigs and I approved, voted to recommend it. But Attorney Breck is here if there's any questions on the eminent domain process, et cetera. She's in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Seeing none. Counsel Williams?
You're... I'm kind of confused. Is it going to be a presentation, and we voting to do this, or...
Our recommendation was to do it. And just Attorney Breck is here, and she presented some things at the meeting a couple hours ago about the eminent domain process. And we had her ask her to come in case anybody here has those same questions.
TJ, why don't you come forward and explain?
Yeah, because that's $700,000.
I think, Mr. President...
$700,000, sorry.
Just to kind of rehash the conversation is the School Department asked the city to purchase a building on Cadwell Drive. The idea was to expand the food service program the way we're doing it. We did a full presentation to the subcommittee two weeks ago, and then again on March 10th, to explain exactly how this all works, how it's a holistic approach to how we're doing the food service and USDA guidelines. So the idea really is the city authorizes and issues $7 million worth of debt. The overall program's going to be around $12 million or so. But the USDA denied our request to let the USDA, the food service program buy the building. They said that you guys could pay at least to the city, but you cannot purchase the building. That's a city function. So they came to us and said, "We will pay the bond costs associated with purchasing the building, and then as long as you guys buy the building for us." So roughly $375,000 a year for 20 years, what they'll be paying us. But with the purchase of the building and the retrofits, what they're looking to do in terms of the kitchen, all the bakery, the, you know, processing of fruits and vegetables, all of that's going to yield a $500,000 savings or more than $500,000 savings for the overall program. They pay us $375,000. They take that other $200,000 worth of savings, and they reinvest it into the capital infrastructure of our kitchens and our schools. The city owns the building, or technically the School Department building. They own the building, they run the building, and then they reimburse us for it.
Okay. But the... And it was a great... I think this is a great proposal, because they're thinking outside the box, we're going to own the building. It's a win-win for the city. I want to thank the superintendent for thinking outside the box. But the eminent domain taking, you said there was a term they used. Is it friendly eminent domain, or...
Correct. I mean, we call it a friendly eminent domain. I will bring Deputy City Solicitor Breck up here to answer technical questions, but it's a friendly eminent domain taken, which means the seller is not against us coming in and purchasing the property. We just need to do it as a mechanism to acquire the property.
I understand. So what if something goes the following? Where he has a... Say, "I want more money."
And so we authorize the debt, and then we don't purchase the building? Is that the question?
No. I mean, if we have to... This body has to take this property by eminent domain.
Correct.
And there's been no price set. It's still being negotiated.
We're closer to a price, but it's...
But it's still being negotiated.
Correct.
So what if... If the negotiations don't go, like, according to plan, then what happens?
Then, oh, they're going according to plan, and the deal falls apart, then we would then reallocate the resources or look at another building. And we need a building regardless.
So right now, you don't have a number?
Right now, we don't have a firm number, because we're still in the negotiation stage. We generally know what the appraised value is, and we generally know what he's looking for as the owner, but we're not there in terms of an absolute price that we can sit there... I can't sit there and say, "Here's the price exactly."
I understand.
And that process will happen April, May, whenever the process that the Law Department has to go through to get us to that point.
And I know because of negotiations, you can't give us a high, and you can't give us a low, you can't give us anything.
I mean, if he's watching right now, we might as well tip our hand for some of the negotiations. But the CFO, the School Department, has been negotiating. I think they're close on a price. I'm just hesitant to put the price out there in the off-chance that it's not a done deal. That's all.
So it's just a leap of faith on this body?
I would call it a leap of faith.
What would you call it?
I'd call it, let us finish our due diligence in that piece of it, but, you know...
Blank check.
Blank check? I like blank checks. Makes my job easier.
Okay. I think it's wonderful, but I just want to make sure I understand the friendly eminent domain process. That's not a typical...
Let me let Attorney Breck explain the process, because I think it became much clearer in the sense of how you go about acquiring and why it's an eminent domain and a so-called friendly eminent domain taking.
Good evening.
Good evening, counselors. Kathleen Breck, Deputy City Solicitor, City of Springfield Law Department. Would you like me to give a general overview of eminent domain and why we're pursuing it this way?
No, it's a... They use the term friendly eminent domain, which set to us that, I don't know, that they have a price and...
That's just a term of art when the parties have been cooperative with each other, as opposed to folks that are... The taking is being done against their wishes. But in this particular situation, both parties are fully cooperating, and the property owner is not opposed to the acquisition of the property by eminent domain. It's just a legal method of acquiring the property in a more timely fashion.
So why is it taking so long to get to a bottom-line price? I mean, if we agree, they agree...
The School Department financial officer is doing the negotiations, and there are a lot of details involved. There's timing, there are tenants there. The property owner's been cooperating with the School Department. I think it will be wrapped up fairly quickly. And normally, what we would do is come to the council with the appropriation the same day as the vote on the taking. That's not happening tonight. We'll be coming back to it a later date to approve the taking.
Why?
I think I could... TJ could probably answer that better than I.
Yeah, the reason that we brought the authorization before the council is we tried to do a holistic approach to how we're issuing the debt. So we brought, I don't know, four, five orders of how we're dealing with the debt, so we could bring it to the council and say, "Here's what our debt schedule looks like, here's what we can afford." We advertised these projects in the paper 10 days prior to the meeting to make sure we abide by bond council and the rules. And so the hope was just to put it all together in one package, so we weren't coming to the council in one vote at a time, because it would make more sense. Because I got a lot of questions every time I brought one thing up, saying, "Great, this is one item we're voting on." And I bring another one, they say, "Well, why are we doing this?" So I figured it'd be a holistic approach to how we're doing it.
Thank you. That's fair.
That's fair. Thank you.
Any other counselors?
That's fair, TJ. Thanks, TJ.
Okay. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Erst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shea, absent, Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, bond is authorized. Okay. Item number 11, Madam Clerk.
I have here bond authorization, police vehicle, $1,125,000. 25,000, I'm sorry.
Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. This item, number 11, for police vehicles, and item number 12 for DPW vehicles, the recommendation of the Finance Committee from our March 10th meeting was to approve both of these items.
Any questions? Counsel Ramos?
What question for TJ? I have to ask this because one of the graduate courses that I'm taking is sustainable development. And so I just want to make sure that we're being energy efficient with these vehicles. And I guess my question applies to number 11 and number 12. Are we going after vehicles that are fuel-efficient?
You know, actually, I don't know if I can answer the question, but the fuel efficiency of them, because we're going after the same make and model of the SUVs that we've had for what we've been purchasing as of recently. So I don't know, Jen, if you have any information as to other than the SUVs we've been using. I can look into that piece for you, Counselor. I just don't know the fuel efficiency of the model. And the DPW trucks, I don't know what they have in terms of fuel-efficient models for trash trucks. Again, I can look into those issues.
I mean, I assume that's one of the things that we look into, right? The fuel efficiency of a vehicle, and how much it's going to cost us in the long run.
We do look at all those things. I don't know what DPW spec'd out for a truck. And I know the SUV, I don't know what they spec'd out in terms of fuel economy or fuel efficiency. So we can look into those things if you need me to.
Are there options when it comes to these things, particularly with police vehicles? Are there options as to, you know, this model or that model? Or is it just...
In terms of police vehicles, there aren't too many options that I'm aware of, and that's kind of what makes it challenging for that. Where our options come in is when we buy the new vehicles, the sedans for every other department that drives around. You can see that they're driving around in more fuel-efficient cars. You know, we have purchased some flex fuel cars, and we have purchased some other hybrids. That's where the flexibility comes in, because that's what we can just say, "We want," you know, whatever, electric vehicles or whatever it is. We have the flexibility on those. I'm not sure how much the commissioner looked into fuel efficiency. I think he's looking for reliable vehicles that are similar make and model to what he has in his current fleet. And the same goes for the DPW.
Counselor, we buy the police vehicles off the state contract, and we utilize MHQ. We don't have an option for efficient vehicles at this time.
There are no options?
Not on the state contract, no. Not for police vehicles.
Police vehicles.
Through MHQ.
What about the DPW vehicles? Are there options there?
I couldn't...
No, I'm not sure. I'll look into the DPW vehicle piece of it, because I'm not sure exactly what... They buy it through statewide contract as well, but I can look into that piece.
Sure. Thank you.
Our most flexibility comes in the other sedans for every other municipal vehicle. That's where all of our flexibility lies.
Counsel Williams?
Yeah, Mr. President, I don't... I think Counsel Ramos is on some quick question. I don't know why someone from DPW isn't here to answer these simple questions, or sorry, from the Police Department? They're department heads, department that should be here. They have a big line item, over $1 million on one, and they're big line items. There's no... Not even the department, there's no one representing those departments. There's questions. He has some real legitimate questions, I think. But...
Any other counselors?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye. Those opposed? You guys have it? Roll call, Madam Clerk on the matter. This is the police vehicles, then we'll do DPW.
Yes, Counsel Erst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shea, absent, Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, bond is authorized. Item number 12. Is there any more discussion on the... Oh, Madam Clerk, please call. Item number 12.
Mr. President.
Well, I've got to have the clerk call it first, and then we'll take it up.
I have here an order for bond authorization, DPW vehicle of $923,925.
Thank you. Counsel Ramos?
Yeah. Item number 11 with the police vehicles, there really isn't an option. There may be an option to be more energy efficient with the vehicles affirmed, the DPW. I'm almost tempted to make a motion to leave it in committee, but for the future reference, I think that we do have to look at these things in terms of the long-term cost. You know, when we're purchasing vehicles, and we have the ability to authorize the purchase of certain vehicles, we have to think of not only the short-term cost, but we have to think more about the long-term cost about these vehicles. And so just for future reference, I think that's something that we need to consider.
TJ, can you speak to... There was a time not too long ago that the city council passed an order regarding hybrid vehicles, a certain percentage of them in the city having to be bought. It was a part of the Green Communities Grant and the Stretch Code. Can you speak to that and whether or not we're following it?
I can look into... I know we did a round of vehicle purchases last year. I can look into what percentage were hybrid and what percentage were...
Do we get that money anymore?
We haven't seen any more money from them in terms of the incentive to buy electric or hybrid vehicles.
Okay. All right. Are there any other counselors? Counsel Twigs?
I was trying to find my... I noticed, Mr. President, where it's given specifically kind of vehicles that they're purchasing. I can't think of them, but DPW got to indicate specifically what... What the needs were. And I mean, we had quite a discussion often, like, what's the use of having such a thing? Bring the report out, a house that don't like ours, and don't like us responding. Semi-automatic 31-cub yard trucks, fully automatic 31-cub yard trucks, one of those, pick-up trucks, two of those, at extra dollars. I mean, this is what they said the needs are. I think they wanted to try to comment every five years. They wanted to come in for replacement, the needs be improved every so often.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Erst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shea, absent, Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, bond is authorized. Madam Clerk, before we call the next item, I was remiss again in not recognizing Ludlow School Committee person Chip Harrington for joining us this evening. He's been here for most of the evening.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you for joining us, Mr. Harrington, in the City of Homes. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item is item number 13, please.
I have here free cash to procurement of $52,500.
Okay. Counselor Allen.
Yes, Mr. President. These next two items, 13 and 14, also came before us at the Finance Committee a couple hours ago. And Counsel Twigs and I both, we approved both of these. The first one is on for more advertising because of the number of RFPs that have gone out. Procurement needs more advertising than normal. And the next one is for a bill from last year that wasn't paid. So they've been approved by the recommendation of the Finance Committee to approve these.
Any questions from counselors? Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on item number 13.
Yes, Counsel Hearst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shea, absent Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient.
And...
Free cash transfer is approved. Item number 14.
Yes, Counsel Hearst?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shea? Absent Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook? Yes, Counsel...
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, transfer is approved. Item number 16, Madam Clerk, second step. Item number 15 has been withdrawn by myself. For purposes of explanation, this item has been on our agenda reoccurring for several months. It's my understanding, after communicating with some people at the State House, that the last one that we passed regarding filling ward vacancies, that bill has been revived in some way, shape, or form, and they have the tools that they need to consider it for referendum.
Okay. Good.
I was under the impression that the bill had died. That was incorrect. The bill is still alive, and the state will act or not act based on their wishes.
This coming election, November?
I mean, at this point, it's been two years old. So we hope that they did it in the last election. I can't speak to what ballot they'll decide to put it on, but I would hope that it would be this November's presidential with the most voters. Okay? So you won't see that one again. Item number 16.
I have here amended ordinance, Chapter 73, Article 2, Section 13, residency.
Okay. Counselor Williams?
This is a second step, Mr. President, regarding second step regarding residency. We passed first step at our prior meeting, asking this body to try and reinstate the residency as it relates to the mayor and his ability to give out waivers. It really addresses waivers, talks about department heads, and also starts us on track in trying to get more people back into the city of Springfield, which will increase our home sales, hopefully, which will increase our revenue, which will increase our growth. We're at our tax levy, two and a half. We're as far as we can go in terms of taxing people. We're not as far as we can go in terms of economic growth. This would go a long way, having people with the ability to live into the city. And I think we've talked with Mr. Mahoney in terms of going back to the ordinance. I don't have an affinity, Mr. President. I think talks about going back to 2007 or 2008. Is it 2007 or... Mr. Mahoney?
Good evening. Good evening, Counselors. Bill Mahoney, Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Thank you.
Just in terms of the ordinance that we passed first step...
Yep.
Did you get a chance to look at it?
I did.
And that goes back to 20...
This is the same ordinance?
Same ordinance, exactly.
That was proposed by the council in 2013, I believe.
Same one.
Yep. And one of my thoughts on that was, I don't know if all of the members of the council had received the opinion letter from the city solicitor back in 2013 regarding that ordinance or not. So I would suggest that the council review that if they haven't done that before.
To what degree is saying that we can't do it?
I think the opinion letter read that it was contrary to the charter and would expose the city to significant liability.
I don't think I saw that myself.
I...
I'm just telling you.
I just tell you, it's... The date was July 19th, 2013. Actually, on the cover, it says 15, but it addressed the President Farrar at the time, so it was 2013.
That's the same one the mayor vetoed.
Yeah. He vetoed that ordinance, and then the same ordinance is now being brought up by the council again.
What's your opinion of it?
What's my opinion of it?
That's what's your opinion of residency?
I think that some of the... I think just to clarify a little bit about residency, it's very rare that a permanent waiver is granted to anyone, and that if you look at since 2013...
How many... Let's... I didn't want to get into this. We'll walk. There are some permanent waivers, and there's some non-wavers, non-permanent waivers within those waivers.
There really aren't, because the ordinance as it exists right now provides that, which was revised by the city council in 2013, provides that anybody has one year from date of hire to get their city residency established.
Right.
So we may issue a temporary waiver. It's something we use just really for tracking. It's not really a... Because they all have a year to get in anyways. So if we hire somebody from Agawam, they have a year to establish the residency in Springfield. If they were to request a waiver, it would be a permanent waiver that they would be requesting. And since October 13, there's only been 15 granted.
Yeah, but there have been, and I'm researching information, there have been some waivers that folks have had a year to move into the city, and they're not in the city.
Yeah. And what I do is I follow...
There's some individuals within, I don't know if it's the fire department, the police department, that are the last two promotions, they promote the two deputies who do not live in the city of Springfield. I don't think have any intentions moving to the city of Springfield. But they're saying, within a year, we're going to be here. There are some other waivers that have been granted that have exceeded the year. I'm trying to research to get the names of the individuals.
And what I do, counselors, I track those, and I contact the department heads, and I ask, hey, we know this person when we were hiring, said they needed six months to get into the city. Are they living in the city? And I have a list where people are like, no, and they don't work for us anymore. No, they can't comply. So they've resigned, and they're not a city employee anymore. So we have that time to again. Then we have a number of people that, yeah, they moved in. So it's both.
What about the compliance piece to this? Do we have a compliance officer?
I don't think there's a compliance piece in this ordinance that you're proposing.
But it's within the residency ordinance, a compliance piece. So the residency ordinance is a compliance piece.
And we send out, every year, we send out residency compliance forms to all city employees.
Is it like the one that we filled out here?
It is. And we come back and we track those documents.
Okay. Well, that's the... Trying to get second and third step done. Send it to the mayor. He's probably going to veto. It's going to come back. And hopefully, this body will override, so we have people will start to live in the city of Springfield and quit skirting the law and living outside the city, especially department heads and deputies. They need to be living in the city of Springfield, period. And I think it's within this body's jurisdiction to enforce residency and eliminate waivers that we have. And you're saying, I looked at the waiver list, there are still some permanent waivers, and there's some waivers that just say waivers. And you haven't been able to determine if they're permanent or if they're not living in the city anymore.
I don't know what list you're referring to, Counsel.
I think the list that you sent to the Union News.
Okay. It would say, it says either temporary or permanent.
That's what I'm telling you. The list you sent to the Union News. That's the list I'm talking about.
Okay.
Your own list, sir.
Yeah, I have that, and they say temporary or permanent.
Right.
I'm looking at it right now.
And you're saying some of those temporary are gone, or maybe not even be on the payroll anymore.
Some are still in the period from when we hired them. So they're still within the six-month or the one-year, if that's what we put in their temporary waiver. And other ones have moved to the city, or they've resigned, or they're still in the waiver period.
So all those temporary, we're still waiting for them to move into the city?
Yeah, the ones at the end of the list. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to... Well, I need to sit down and have a conversation with you.
Sure.
And then, do you oversee the police department, the fire department? They all come into your jurisdiction too, right?
Well, it's one human resources function for the...
Who makes sure that they stay in the city, from the police department?
Oh, remember...
The deputies, the supervisors, not the rank and file.
Okay. They have, I believe, in their offer letter, appointing them to the position, they had one year to move in. I think that's consistent with the current ordinance.
And there aren't any within the fire or the police department that have been on that list that live outside the city of Springfield?
I'm not sure. Say that again, please.
There aren't any within the fire department or the police department?
Well, yeah. The police and fire, they all have the 10- and 15-mile range on their appointments. So...
First I heard of that. That's within what?
That's been for, goes back to, I think, the 80s, where there was an, I think it was Arvin Anderson was the arbitrator on the case, I believe, when it came up with police, and the city attempted...
That's rank and file.
That was the...
The supervisors have to move into the city of Springfield.
I believe the SPSA also has the same thing, which are the supervisors. So when you're talking about supervisors, sergeant, lieutenants, and captains are all in one group.
Deputies.
There's three deputies outside that group. One lives in the city, two live outside, and I believe their appointment letter says they have one year to move in.
Yeah, but you're saying they can live within 10 to 15 miles outside the city.
Well, I'm just, I'm referring back to...
No.
I'm referring back to the rank and file rule.
No, I'm not talking about rank and file. We're dealing with supervisors and deputies. The deputies now.
The deputies is what we're talking about, yes.
Yeah, those two deputies that were appointed...
Yeah.
That live outside the city of Springfield.
They did at appointment, yes.
And you're saying they have within...
One year to move in.
Okay. They've been living outside the city, but there's still been officers. They've been...
Yeah, because they were in a lower rank, and their bargaining unit was not bound by the residency ordinance.
So that was part of our negotiations.
It's part of the police supervisor. I'm doing this from memory, but I don't think they're bound by the residency ordinance and the police supervisors. One of the problems is when you look at residency, when they're complicated, is that the pool of candidates that we're dealing with all live outside, or can live outside the city because of collective bargaining.
How does Boston enforce their residency? How does Mayor Menino, God rest his soul, the current mayor, make sure that people live in the city? They make sure they live here.
I don't know what Boston does. I know they have a 10-year rule, but I don't know what Boston does.
Well, you have to live. And they enforce, they have a compliance officer that goes around and makes sure people live in the city.
Yeah.
Which is important, because it sends a long signal to people that, you know, if you want to work, you should want to live in the city. Because a lot of these people live outside the city, badmouth the city of Springfield. They badmouth the city, and they don't even live here. And I hear, and a lot of us hear, I'm sick and tired of it. Sick and tired of it. Taking the money out of this city. We have qualified people live in the city of Springfield, and I dare the mayor to say that we don't. And sometimes we've appointed individuals where we've eliminated qualifications. We've dumbed down qualifications. So I don't want to say people aren't qualified, we look for most qualified person. We've done that. We've dumbed down qualifications, put people in. That looks good. That's not going for the highest and the best use for individuals. So hopefully, the body will take the second and third step, because I know our folks in the city need jobs.
Counsel Hearst?
Just a quick question. Are you saying, Mr. Mahoney, that as long as you've gone through, as long as you've been a rank and file officer in both the police department and the fire department, that you do not have to abide by the city ordinance on residency, regardless of how high you get?
No.
So there's not a certain point at any time in which a rank and file police officer or fireman, there's no point that they reach, whether it's captain, lieutenant, sergeant, deputy chief, district chief, in which they now fall under the city's ordinance, thereby trumping whatever they abided by when they were under that collective bargaining agreement?
Right. Under the... There are probably two things that would come to mind that I would be concerned about. Is one, the original ordinance reads that anyone that was employed by the city prior to March 17, 1995, is exempt from the ordinance. And the second one is anything that collective bargaining, the collective bargaining provision such that residency is a mandatory subject of bargaining. So in order to impose the ordinance on any bargaining group, you'd have to negotiate that, which is something that I've done on behalf of the city with a number of our units already. We have not done it successfully with the rank and file police, the IBPO, or with the IFF. So none of those folks in those groups have to live in the city. If you are a police officer, you can live within 15 miles of the perimeter of the city. And if you are a firefighter, you can live within 10 miles of the perimeter of the city.
But what about... So how are we requiring the deputy chiefs?
Deputy chiefs are not in a bargaining unit. Once they get to...
District chiefs?
When they get to the... The district chiefs have their own separate bargaining unit. The district chiefs are in the fire department, and they have their own separate bargaining unit.
Okay. And so the city's ordinance doesn't apply to them? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying with the district chiefs, that is a subject of collective bargaining. We have gone to the table, and we have been in a discussion with them about whether or not they are bound under the ordinance or not. We've taken the position that they are, they've taken a position that they are not, and we've been negotiating, we've been having meetings with that, but we've held that in abeyance pending action by the city council.
I'm sorry. What's pending action by the city council? So in your opinion, they do fall under the city's ordinance?
We've taken a position at the table that they are bound by it. They have taken a position that know that because of... Well, their argument is that they are not bound on it despite the language in the contract. And what we've done is we've held it in abeyance, because there had been a lot of talk at one point about just setting a new date and moving forward for their on-residency.
Which you feel as though they are bound?
That's been our position at the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Could it be, Mr. Mahoney, that the reason that they've taken that position, that they're not bound by the language of the contract, is the lack of enforcement?
No, I don't think that's... That was not their...
What would be...
That was not their position at the table.
What would be the reason that they would take a position that they're not bound by the legal...
I think they're arguing that...
By the legal text of their collective bargaining contract.
I think they're, and this goes back a few years, but I believe that it was, at some point, the ordinance was invalid for a period of time. I think that has been their argument.
Invalid? Because of lack of enforcement?
Right. I don't think it was lack of enforcement. I think it was just...
All right. Is there any other counselors that... Counsel Ramos?
Mr. President, when this first came up at the last meeting, I was in support of it, and I voted in favor of it, simply because I do believe that we, as legislators, have the responsibility to be job creators for our community, and it is one of our duties to create jobs for our residents. You know, granting waivers for residency is a disservice to our city and to our residents. And so I still remain in favor of this proposed ordinance. However, I did have some concerns about the language in it. More specifically, the part that talked about the information being shared with the city council. I didn't feel comfortable, and I still don't feel comfortable, with a person or an employee of the city who is asking for a waiver to have to share that information with 13 members of the city council. And so I want to offer an amendment to the ordinance, just to kind of protect these folks' privacy. So I wanted to offer the amendment that would read, right after the sentence that says that the information should be forwarded to the city council, "In said notice forwarded to the city council, the Director of Labor Relations shall redact all personal information, including the name of the person requesting the waiver."
Okay. Motion made by Counsel Ramos, seconded by Counselor Ash. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it. Any more discussion on the ordinance as amended? Counsel Marcus Williams?
Mr. President, just a quick question. What's the status of getting those particular names or the redaction of the names with the information of that list of clientele that participated, getting waivers? And while we're at it, what's also the status of vacancies for commissions as well? Has that stuff been requested?
Well, I can answer one of those questions. At our last meeting on March 7, we passed a resolution sponsored by Counselor Allen, and it's lengthy, but the end says, "Now therefore be it resolved, Springfield City Council hereby urges the mayor to make all appointments and/or reappointments under his authority to blah, 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 the Residency Compliance Commission and all other boards and commissions." So we haven't heard back. Madam Clerk, has the mayor signed that resolution? He has not? Okay. That matter is still on his desk. Regarding the second question, you're saying, can we get a list of all the people that have waivers?
Speaking to what Counselor Williams was referring to.
Maybe Mr. Mahoney can speak to that. I don't know that we've formally made that request of him.
We'll send the same list that we've sent to the media up to the city council.
Please.
Yep. I'll say it's not a complete list. We don't think it is. Or I should say, I don't think it is. So I'll give you what I have. I'm sorry. I was saying, I don't know that it's a complete list. We looked at it, you know, years ago, and there was no central registry, so what we've done is we've just tried to piece it together as best we can.
There's no central registry for...
There is now, but going back historically before I arrived, there wasn't.
Has that information been inputted into the central database?
We've tried, we've tried to gather as much as we can, yes.
Can I just ask, what system do you use for that?
Right now, we're tracking it in Excel.
That's Excel? Maybe we need to put somebody towards database.
Counselor Hearst.
Let's talk to you about budget season.
Mr. Mahoney, more specifically to the point I made earlier, can we have a list of the names of those particular individuals who you feel that the ordinance applies to but are not complying regardless whether they're in the fire department or in the police department? I don't know if the police department has the same issue, but, but can you provide us with the names of those individuals who are not living inside the city? I mean, because it seems to me, based off of the ordinance that I read, and I actually agree with your position, I agree with the city's position, that, that something should happen. Now, the question is, what is that going to be? I don't know how long it's been in limbo. I don't know what the negotiations are that you've made. I don't know when the last contract was agreed to. But it would seem to me that based off of the ordinance, that something should be happening with these particular individuals, especially if you believe that they are out of compliance.
Counselor, let me, what I like to do for you and for the council is, let me just write a summary by, of each bargaining unit in each group. And I'll send that to the city council so you can see. Because some of it is, for instance, in, you know, some of my groups that I deal with, certain parts of their bargaining unit are bound by it and then other parts are not based on their date of hire. And, you know, that's been something I've been bringing back to the council because we've been pretty good at the table with that and say, "Listen, as of July 1, 2014, all, everybody hired into this bargain needs to comply with the city's residency ordinance." And the unions have been agreeable to that, many of them. Some of them had it going back to 2000. So, I'll send you a list of all of that so it explains who's in it and who's out.
I, I, I just want the list of, all I'm concerned about are the people that are, that you believe are out of compliance. Those are the only names I want. Because if you believe they're out of compliance, which it sounds like you just said, then it seems to me like something should be done to get these people in compliance. And I, and I've, along with Counselor Williams, I've heard from a number of people who feel as though there are people in both the police department and the fire department who are not in compliance. And it sounds like you agree with them. So, if that's the case, it seems like, seems we both should agree that something should be done. And I think it spells it out pretty specifically in the ordinance.
Okay. Any other counselors? Counselor Williams?
Just real quick, Bill. Come on, come on. Just, and I want to, I want to come in, you've done a good job with code enforcement, I think DPW, moved to the park department. Why is it so difficult when all the other bargaining units are like coming to the table? We get to police and fire. It's like a tug of war.
Yeah, you know, it's...
I'm serious. You've done a great job with the other, the nurses. You've done a great job with...
It's because it's a, it's a completely different statute. So, with the four police and fire units, they are all covered under the Joint Labor Management Committee statute and none of the other 20 bargaining units we have are. So, they have interest arbitration as the closer mechanism. So, what happens is I can, I can maintain a, a, a strong position at the table with police and fire, but at the end of the day, I don't have the final say. An arbitrator has the final say on what the contract will be.
No, if you, if you, if you both parties agree to something, you give them something, they give you something, you got a deal, you go to the table. I understand that. If you go with the mindset, not, you got to give up something to them to get something.
Yeah.
And the other point, I've heard from Springfield firefighters who live in this great city and they wish we would enforce residency. There's a lot of firefighters who live outside of this city. They should want to live in the city. They should want to, like DPW, like code enforcement, like the park, like the nurses, like everyone else. But come like our, some of our biggest employers, police and fire, they should be the first ones wanting to live in the city. But you come to the table with them and they want to get something. You have to give up something to get something. You have to give up something to get something because we need them living in the city to help rebuild this city. With the casino coming, we really need them living in the city for a lot of other reasons. So, I hope when you go to the table, you have an open mind and offer them something. But like Counselor Hearst, I agree with you. You're saying that you believe we're in a position of strength, that they're actually breaking the law. They're bound, whatever aspect of that contract, they're bound by whatever, high, low, in between. And I think something should be done. A letter, send a letter out or something. We don't have a compliance officer. I guess you are the compliance officer. We need to have, Mr. President, the mayor needs to think about getting compliance in this residency. We've asked for it and asked and asked and asked. Without compliance, this doesn't mean too much.
Any other counselors? Okay. All those in favor on passage for second step referral to committee on enrollment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Guys have it. We're going to take third step last. Right after...
Good job, counselors. Good job.
The next item, Madam Clerk, item number 17.
I have here an ordinance establishing a blessed house historic district.
Any comments or questions? We heard from Mr. McCarron earlier in the evening on this. Counselor Edwards?
Mr. President, my colleagues, please, I stand in support of this item. This is a creation of a single entity district. It affects nobody else in the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, it stabilizes this property into the future. Whoever decides to purchase the property will be made aware of its standing as a historic district. It impacts none of the neighbors except the fact that the property values around it will be stabilized by a creation of it. Bob has been a great servant to the community and, as you know, was, is, most recently was a member of the historic commission. This wasn't done without great thought and much research. And I stand in support of it and respectfully would ask all of you to support this creation as well.
Other counselors? Counselor Marcus Williams?
Just a clarifying question. I also stand in support of the bill as well, or the ordinance, I should say. But does this go, moving forward, would homes decide, I guess, for, to create their own local historic district? Does that somehow lessen or does it add to the value of other homes in the future? Or how, what's the outlook of that moving forward? Because I mean, I guess if the qualifications are met for a home that has, you know, certain points of interest that qualify under that, then is it, you know, I guess, I guess, does it lessen the value of the home moving forward or other homes? If single homes now decide that they want to be a local historical district?
Mr. President, may Bob McCarron address this council?
Mr. McCarron?
Please.
I think the counselor's question is probably better asked of the assessors. But, you know, in, in general, historic district status, I think, protects the value of the property because I think there's a large number of people who choose to live in areas where they know that their neighbor can't be doing bad things because there's oversight over everyone. You know, a historic district, at least the larger ones, like when you passed recently Colony Hills, you know, it's a trade-off of everyone is under the rules of the historic district. And you sort of hope that you get to do what you want, but your neighbor, if he wants to do something really bad, doesn't get to do it. And, and if you leave the districts we've had, Forest Park was 40 years old last year. McKnight turns 40 this year. If you drive one block outside the McKnight local historic district, you see what 40 years of non-protection has done. And I, certainly in my mind, it has lessened the value of the houses for people who are looking for a gracious older home.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of first step referral to committee on ordinances, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Guys have it. First step is approved.